Good evening. The April 9th, 2019 Meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System, or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item, or matters on which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing, or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Tia Brown, Secondary Science Program Specialist, and Ms. Christine Strickland, Secondary Math Program Specialist, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Mayor. Tonight I have the privilege of introducing two young men that are representatives of Marion County for very special programs. You'll hear more about these programs later. Tonight, we have Tomaso DiOrio from Bellevue High School. Tomaso will represent Marion County Schools as a Sunshine State Scholar at the State Recognition Event. He will share our inspiration. He will be followed by Nick Repel, an Eagle Scout from Forest High School, who's also one of Marion County Public Schools' Science and Engineering Fair winners, and he will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Curiosity. We all want to know the things we don't know. We want to see the beautiful intricacies that explain how everything relates. We, as human beings, have an insatiable thirst for knowledge. That is why students go to school, to know. But I think there's more to it than just knowing. I can tell you the ins and outs of algebraic theorems, and I could try to explain the beauty of Euler's identity, but what's all that knowledge without the learning process? I believe the most powerful tool that any mathematics student has at their disposal is the ability to know more. We have the ability to look deeper, to look for more, to expand our horizons, and that tool is curiosity. When I look out in the night sky, I see a boundless sea of stars, each one based on the simple foundation of numbers. But at the same time, I know that there's so much more to understand, so much more to grasp, and perhaps the best, and maybe even the only way to understand that, is the language of mathematics. Math can transcend subject lines. It's an art, a language, and a topic rich with history. And math can transcend barriers. It's a uniform language, can't be misinterpreted. But above all, math is the only idea we have at our disposal that we will never be able to stop exploring. Now watch me try to explain to my mom that I want to be an explorer. I want to dig deep, not only know more, but understand more. I want to see the language of logic be stretched to its limits. And if I'm not searching, if I'm not using my curiosity to take the understanding of our world to higher heights, then I'm simply wasting time. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the exception of items D-22.4, D-22.5, and D-22.6, which have been pulled and placed on the April 23rd, 2019 Board Packet, I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 9th, 2019 School Board Meeting. With the materials in the Board Packet, those materials distributed to Board Members at the meeting, and the audio recording included, as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thrower, second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 30th, 2019 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 4th, 2019 Special School Board Meeting?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. Thrower. Second by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by voting, or saying aye.
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 And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 4th, 2019 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passed 5-0. Dr. Mayer, Superintendent, would like to recognize an employee for their heroism.
Oh, my goodness, Board. Ms. Parker, would you and Mr. Green come to the podium? It's frequent that I'll get emails from principals who want to share stories that have happened at their school, and want to brag on their employees, and they know to send that because I put it in the Monday memo. So, and I get quite a few from Ms. Parker and her awesome staff out at East Marion Elementary. But when I got this, I had to stop. I ran out, and I got Carolyn, and I said, "She will not believe this, and you all will not believe this." So, Ms. Parker, will you please share?
Thank you. Chairwoman Kelly, Board Members, Dr. Mayer, thank you for having us here this evening. I stand beside Mr. Kendrick Green, who is one of my second grade teachers. I truly believe that our teachers are everyday heroes in the classroom, doing heroic things every day to make good citizens for our community. I wanted to talk with you about how Mr. Green carried his heroic efforts into our community last Thursday, March 28th. He was driving home after school, and a car accident unfolded right in front of him. As a matter of fact, the car right in front of Mr. Green was struck by a car that crossed over the center line, and caused the vehicle in front of Mr. Green to roll several times, and when it came to rest, it caught on fire. And Mr. Green didn't think anything about it. He jumped out of his car, ran over to that burning vehicle, and opened the door and helped the motorist drag the motorist to safety. On Friday morning, when I got to school, my SRO told me that he saved that motorist's life. I recognized Mr. Green on our morning announcements. That Friday, he was a little bit irritated with me, because he's a super humble person. But he said, "I just did what anyone else would do." And I told our kids, "What a wonderful, wonderful world we would live in if everyone just lived the way that Mr. Green does." So it's my honor to be here with you tonight, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
I was like, "I'm not going to put you on the spot and ask you to say anything." I can tell. But I do want to just thank you, and I do believe you, or actually, Ms. Parker, when she says, that you just did it as being selfless and not even think anything of it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's a teacher for you.
That is. Ms. Tia Brown, Secondary Science Program Specialist, would like to recognize the following Marion County Public Schools' Big Springs Regional STEM Fair winners.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Mayer. The Big Springs Regional STEM Fair began in Marion County in 1955. Through statewide organization, Marion County was merged with Sumter County, and includes students in grades 6 through 12 from public, private, charter, and homeschools. The STEM Fair challenges students to turn their curiosities into realities. There are thirteen categories offered in a variety of scientific areas, where students compete for the opportunity to attend the prestigious State Science and Engineering Fair for four days in Lakeland, Florida, and the International Science and Engineering Fair for a week in Phoenix, Arizona. The STEM Fair occurred on February 7th at Circle Square Cultural Center, with a hundred and forty Marion County Public School projects from twenty-one secondary schools on display. After judging by community members on February 7th, students eagerly attended an awards ceremony on the evening of February 8th to reveal results. The top thirty-two projects overall, which is a shared quota with Sumter County, attend the State Science and Engineering Fair, while the top three scoring projects for Marion County, including private and charter schools, are invited to attend the International Science and State Engineering Fair. Locally, the fair was an exciting way for our entire community to see the wonderful activities taking place in secondary science classrooms, and participate in the judging of these projects. At this time, we would like to recognize the following Marion County Public Schools' State and International Fair participants. Zoya Beatty from Bellevue Middle School, and Christian Compton from North Marion Middle School were unable to make it tonight due to other events. Camille Duma from Howard Middle School. Camille also won first place in Earth and Environmental Sciences at state competition, and a nomination to Broadcom Masters Competition. Luke Myers from Osceola Middle School. Luke also received honorable mention in Plant Sciences at state competition. Hannah Provost from Howard Middle School was unable to join us tonight. Gabriel Rebe from Howard Middle School. Gabriel also won a $50 special award at state competition for his project. Vivek Sandra Patti from Howard Middle School. Vivek won first place in engineering, $250 cash and special awards, and nomination to Broadcom Masters. Kaitlin Soriano from Howard Middle School, and Chelsea Stopford from North Marion Middle School were unable to join us tonight. For State Science Fair in the senior category, we have Alexandra Ramos Hernandez from Westport High School, and Nicholas Rupel from Forest High School. Nick won fourth-place certificates, a medallion, and $325 in special awards for the drone he created. Our State and International Science and Engineering Fair participants are Andy Scharr from Vanguard High School, who won third place in chemistry at state, and Angela Scharr from Vanguard High School, who won recognition in cellular and molecular biology, nomination for UCF Pegasus Gold Scholarship at $14,000 over eight semesters. They were also unable to be here tonight due to other school events. These students love their academics.
The Board wants to say something to you. Okay.
Congratulations. It is, you make us very proud in Marion County. We want to thank you, and we look forward to all of the things that you are going to do with your lives. You are off to a marvelous start. I want to thank your moms and dads, and your teachers, because I know without them, it would not be possible for you to be here. So congratulations.
So proud of you. When they were calling out some of the different awards you received, I looked at Ms. McCall, and I said, "I can't even say that." I don't even know how you learn it. I can't even say it. But congratulations, because it's, I guess we've just come such a long way. When I was in school, we didn't even hear about this stuff. This is all how science has just advanced, and engineering and everything, and so I know your parents are so proud of you, and thank you for working so hard, and you will be the leaders of tomorrow.
Because you're already the leaders of today, and thank you for representing your schools, and our district, and your family so well, and also living up to your own potential. Not every kid your age is doing that, so good for you. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys, for representing Marion County. Our future looks bright because you guys are in it, so thank you.
That's right, and I echo everything they said. Congratulations, and awesome job, well done. Did you get your picture? There you go.
Lots of parents here. Parents, if you'd stand up and take some pictures, we'd like to take a look at the picture.
Ms. Christine Strickler, Secondary Math Program Specialist, would like to recognize the following Sunshine State Scholar winners.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Mayer. The Sunshine State Scholar Program was initiated in 1998, and is designed to recognize high school students who excel in mathematics and science. Earlier in this school year, each of our high schools was asked to nominate an outstanding junior in mathematics and science. Each nominee was required to complete an application package that included an essay. A district committee reviewed each application, and selected two winners to represent Marion County. The selection process involved judging the nominees on their academic achievement in math and science, advanced coursework, community service, participation in STEM competitions, and their thoughtful response on the essay. Selecting two winners was extremely difficult, due to the outstanding quality of all the nominees. On June 13th and 14th of 2019, Marion County's top two winners will join other districts from across the state, and their scholars, as they engage in academic competition, and are recognized for their outstanding achievement at Florida Department of Education-sponsored recognition event in Orlando. We'll now recognize the Sunshine State Scholar School candidates that were selected by their campus, and the ones that will represent us at the state level. So we have Kenneth Richardson from Donellen High School, Destiny Coffman from Lake Weir High School was unable to join us this evening, Aiden Hernandez-Rolls from North Marion High School, David Ray II from Westport High School, Taylor Storely from Forest High School, and she is the district alternate for the state event. And then the two scholars that will continue on to represent Marion County Public Schools at the state competition are Nisha Upadhyay from Vanguard High School, and Tomaso DiOrio from Bellevue High School. We are proud of each of these students and all they have accomplished.
Congratulations. Job well done. Looking forward to hearing much more about you, and keep up the very, very good work, moms and dads. Teachers, thank you so much for supporting your students.
Thank you for working hard, and, you know, the people that work so hard, sometimes they'll say, "Oh, you know, I remember listening to my kids talk one day, and one of the kids said, 'Well, those are just a bunch of nerds.'" But you know what the other kid in the room said? "It's a CPA today." He goes, "But they will be our boss one day." So remember, when someone says that to you, just smile, and you will laugh last, okay?
Way to hit those academic home runs. Congratulations.
You guys are really, 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 really representing Marion County very well, and we just look forward to seeing what you guys are going to do in the future. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, congratulations, and job well done, and good luck.
Keep making those good choices. We need you.
Congratulations.
I vote for you. I vote for you. Grab my vote. Whatever you run for.
Okay. School as a Magnet School of Distinction. This prestigious designation is by the Magnet Schools of America.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Reverend Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Mr. Gibbs, and Ms. Martinez-Lopez. We are very excited tonight to share with the Board a couple of recognitions. First, we're going to talk about North Marion High School, and something very exciting has happened to them. North Marion High School is the home of one of our two Cambridge ACE programs, and was recently recognized as a Magnet School of Distinction. Magnet Schools of America seeks to identify model magnet programs in schools throughout the nation. This organization recognizes schools that offer outstanding magnet programs that strongly support the five pillars of magnet schools: diversity, innovative curriculum, academic excellence, high quality, and family and community partnerships. North Marion High School was judged to be outstanding in all of these areas. To be chosen for this designation, schools must complete a rigorous application process to be scored by a nationally renowned panel of educators. Schools must score highly in all areas that address the aforementioned five pillars of magnet schools. North Marion was one of only twenty-two high schools in the state of Florida to receive this designation this school year. This is the first time that one of our district schools has received this honor. Congratulations again to North Marion High School and the Cambridge ACE program for being recognized nationally. Tonight, North Marion High School Principal Danielle Livingston and Cambridge ACE Coordinator Dana Spencer are here as representatives of the teachers and students of North Marion High School. North Marion High School received recognition for their magnet program at the Annual Magnet Schools of America Conference in Baltimore later this week. At this time, I'd like to introduce Danielle Livingston, the principal of North Marion High School, and she's going to say a couple more words. Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Thank you. I would like to introduce Dana Spencer. She has been a North Marion advocate in everything she does for twenty-five years. This is the eleventh year of the ACE program at North Marion, and this is the first time, as Mr. McAtier just mentioned, that we were able to complete this application. And Dana was able to capture the words and put everything on paper, but the teachers and the students make it happen every day, and Dana would be the first one to give all the credit to our teachers and students. So we're extremely proud, and I will travel to Baltimore on Friday to accept our awards. So we're super excited.
We're excited for you.
Yes, I'm so happy for you guys. I'm just going to say quickly, I started my career at North Marion High as an ESC classroom aide, and, you know, we've always been so much more than just that little football school, so north side pride.
Mr. Ken McAtier, Director of Secondary Education, is back this time to recognize Westport High School's designation as Florida Arts Achievement Model School. This prestigious designation is given by the Florida Department of Education. Mr. McAtier, please share.
Westport High School, home of the Marion County Center for the Arts, was recently recognized for all four of its exemplary arts programs in dance, drama, music, and the visual arts. The Florida Department of Education, in partnership with the Florida Alliance for Arts Education, seeks to identify model education, arts education programs in schools throughout Florida. The Florida Arts Model Schools program recognizes schools that offer outstanding programs in any of the four arts disciplines. Although a school may apply for only one designation, Westport High School applied in all four of their art programs. Therefore, in addition to being named a Florida Arts Model School, they are given the additional comprehensive designation title of a Florida Arts Achievement Model School. Every three years, the schools must reapply for the designation. This process requires that the school's art programs complete a comprehensive self-analysis comprising numerous categories, including curriculum design, student performance, program design, community partnerships, and a description of how the school culture strongly emphasizes and supports the arts. An additional video component requires videotaped lessons of all eleven arts instructors, four videos depicting student performances, and four videos showing the school's arts facilities and equipment. So this isn't just filling out a piece of paper and hoping. There's a lot of evidence that has to go behind it, as with North Marion's. Westport High School has received this award four times since 2010. Congratulations again to Westport High School and the Marion County Center for the Arts for their award-winning arts programs. I know the last time they received this designation, there was only one school in the state besides Westport that received the Florida Arts Achievement Model School. It was a K-8 school, Davenport K-8 Arts School, where the school was completely dedicated to the arts. This time, Westport is the only school in the state to receive the FAMs designation in all four areas of the arts. Tonight, Westport High School... Tonight, Westport High School Principal Ginger Cruz and Marion County Center for the Arts Coordinator Lori Reader are here as representatives of the Arts Magnet at Westport High School. Westport High School, and also Joe Crowder is here, our performing arts program specialist. Thanks to her for being here. And Westport will be recognized for their arts programs this summer at the annual FAAE Summit in Fort Lauderdale. I want to introduce Ms. Ginger Cruz to talk a little bit more about the arts programs at Westport High School. Ginger?
Thank you so much. We are so thrilled about this, and if you've not seen the magic out at Westport, we have some magic. I want to do a big thank you to Ms. Reader, and also Ms. Crowder, that helped us with the application, but it was quite a big process. But if you haven't been out to our programs, we've got a great theater program this week, The Drowsy Chaperone. Come out and see it, but it's all magical. We have over eight hundred students that are in at least one of our arts or music programs, and just to see what they do and how they do it, coupled with our rigorous academics, just makes the magic. So we're just very, very proud. But I tell you, Ms. Reader has done this for several years now, and there's a lot to put together, but come see the magic, and we're very thrilled about this. Thank you so much.
May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation recognizing the Third Annual Superintendent's Literacy Festival to be held on Saturday, April 13th, 2019?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings. Moved by, or seconded by Ms. Thrower. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Director, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
This is Summer Gill, and you will understand why she's standing beside me during this proclamation. It reads, "Whereas the citizens of Marion County, Florida, stand firmly committed to promoting early reading and literacy skills as the catalyst for our children's future academic success, their preparation to be successful community leaders, and their ability to sustain a healthy and rewarding life. Whereas Marion County Public Schools, in partnership with the Early Learning Coalition of Marion County, the Read Allowed Fifteen Minutes Program, and private childcare facilities, have provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement to educate our children, grounded in the principle that early educational investment is key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. Whereas the Third Annual Superintendent's Literacy Festival, a community-wide celebration of the joy of reading, will be held this Saturday, April 13th, 2019. The festival promotes the important role early literacy skills play in children's development, and encourages reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. And whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida, calls on the citizens of Marion County to assure every child has access to quality literacy materials, and is committed to reading together with a caring adult on April 13th, 2019." Summer Gill is with the Marion County Literacy Council, which is part of what I just read. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida enthusiastically endorses the Third Annual Superintendent's Literacy Festival, and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities making our community's children the best readers in the world. So, Summer, I'm going to present this to you. I know you have taken on a lot of responsibility for this Saturday. You're welcome to share some comments with the Board. I'm sure they have some for you as well, if you'd like.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you. Obviously, you know, the Literacy Council, we are focused on adults, and part of that is because, you know, we want to make sure that our adults are able to help our children, and that is how we make sure that our community continues to grow, and that we get the jobs that we want here. A better education for all means a better community for all. So just thank you so much.
So just thank you so much for this opportunity. A lot of you guys know me. I love planning events. I love helping this community. This is my home, and so this is just one more way that I can make a difference here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being our event planner.
This could not have happened without your assistance and the assistance... Can you recognize your board member here?
This is Ashley. Ashley's one of our board members. She works at Advent Health, and she is amazing. We could not do anything without our board, and we are very, I'm very lucky, because it's the best board ever.
Well, in case the public isn't familiar with what you do, not only do you provide access to tutoring to help folks, adults who need assistance reading, but you do so much more. Can you just take a moment to share that?
Absolutely. So, we, our whole entire goal is to help adults have the access and learn any literacy skill. So under that is obviously reading, but we also help folks prepare for their GED, learn English, and get their citizenship. And we do all that with one-on-one tutoring and group tutoring with a whole volunteer career. So we have close to about 60 volunteers who come in and dedicate themselves to helping over 500 students every year achieve their goals. So it's a pretty dynamic, amazing place to work, and all of our students have children, so their work at the center means they're impacting the home and they're impacting the school system in a positive way.
And in our conversations, we realized how much we share, that you are tutoring the parents of our kids.
Yes.
And so a partnership is developing, and we look forward to more partnerships with your organization and just changing the world.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation recognizing the month of April as School Library Month?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thrower, seconded by Ms. McCall. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by voting or saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Director, and Ms. Jennifer Leeds, Coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
She has some friends with her who are known through our school, so I'm going to have her bring those in while we read this proclamation. Because we want you all to hear the proclamation.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
This proclamation reads, "Whereas library programs ensure that all students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school. Whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the library specialist in each school to teach the skills of locating, evaluating, and using information found in traditional resources and new technologies, to provide literature appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading for every student. Whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools. Whereas the library program contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. And whereas the school librarians of Marion County have dedicated themselves to work for quality library programs for all students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Marion County Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 2019 as School Library Month in all of the public schools of Marion County, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Marion County to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month." So, Ms. Leeds, I'll present this to you, and I know you have some words on behalf of your colleagues.
Thank you. I do. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Reverend Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Ms. Martinez Lopez, Mr. Gibbs. On behalf of Marion County Public School Libraries, I'd like to thank the Marion County School Board, our superintendent, and our school communities for your support of our school libraries. Marion County Public School Libraries aid in preparing students for lifelong learning, make a measurable difference in our student academic achievement, and enhance the reading enjoyment for our students. These programs, and most importantly, the inviting environment that these librarians provide, would not be possible without them. So tonight, I have several media specialists that I would like to introduce to you that represent Marion County Public School Libraries. From Westport High School, Emily Wilson. From Lakeview High School, Jacqueline O'Rourke. From Osceola Middle School, Susan Mitchell. From Liberty Middle School, Terri Adams. From Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks, Daniella Dreisen. From Fort McCoy School, Angela Warner. From Legacy Elementary School, Erin Martin. And from Shady Hill Elementary School, Debbie Pace. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would like to say something, real quick. Ms. Adams.
I would like to hear it.
No. No. You've been hearing me for 30 years.
I know. How you doing?
She was my children's librarian at Madison Street, and she would have the kids be quiet in the library, but then we look up, and she's on the MCY field, everybody's screaming and hollering because she's the referee. So she has worn so many hats, the referee's hat, the quiet hat, and thank you so much. And I know so many of you have stories with parents the same way, with each one of us that have known you through the years and our paths have crossed, but it's so neat when I see teachers that made a difference in my children's life walk before me. Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Well, Ms. Adams, you also taught my baby Allison. You did. You did.
Who's 22 and a college graduate and performing well, so.
I also have two principles that I taught.
We love y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation recognizing the After-School Professionals' Appreciation Week on April 22, 2019 through April 26, 2019?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Director, and Ms. Pam Eubanks, Program Manager, Extended Day, please come forward with the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Now, I may steal some of Pam's thunder here, but I heard before this meeting started that it has taken 30 years for this proclamation to materialize, so I am thrilled to be able to share it with you tonight. It reads, "Whereas the School Board of Marion County believes that after-school professionals have a positive effect on our children, families, community, and businesses, whereas after-school professionals are a decisive element in children's access to high-quality relationships and expanded opportunities which they need to reach their full potential. Whereas after-school professionals deserve appreciation for all that they do for children to enhance their education, promote physical and emotional health, provide a safe environment, and expose them to new experiences. Whereas Marion County Public Schools is committed to supporting the professionals who provide expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in the global economy. Whereas the National After-School Association designated April 22 through 26, 2019 as After-School Professional Week. And whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida endorses the observance of After-School Professionals Week as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of after-school programs and those that work in the programs, and encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. Now therefore, be it proclaimed," those are in all caps, "the School Board of Marion County, Florida recognizes April 22 through 26, 2019 to be After-School Professionals Week." And I know Pam, on behalf of the Board and the Superintendent, we say thank you because we know that your folks have a tremendous impact on our kids after the traditional school day ends.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate that. And thank you, Board, and Madam Chair, and Vice Chair, and Dr. Mayor, for recognizing Extended Day tonight. We are joining the National After-School Association to celebrate professionals that we feel like are the heart of after-school programming. And here in Marion County, we serve 3,000 students every afternoon, and we have a team of 250 people that are after-school professionals that assist us in that. And tonight, I'm going to bring forward three ladies that are just shy of 30 years with Marion County schools, and they are all, and I'll, come on up, and then I'll introduce you.
They look so young.
So they're accepting this proclamation on behalf of all of our team. We have with us Margaret White. She, Margaret, has been with Fort McCoy for 17 years. Prior to that, she served at East Marion, but she's been 17 years at Fort McCoy. In addition to doing the aftercare, she volunteers to do the safety patrol and has done that for several years for that school. So, and then we have Rosanna Godwin, who's with Oak Crest, and Rosanna's been there for 13 years. And this year, she started a reading nook in the cafeteria along with Dr. Lienenbach to encourage the kids to read. If they get through with lunch, they get to go to the reading nook, as well as in the afternoon, she has that reading nook.
And where was she before Oak Crest?
Oh, that's right. So, and then...
NH Jones.
Yes, she was at Dr. NH Jones. Yes, she was.
Yeah, by Jack.
Right. And she was at Anthony for 13 years prior to Oak Crest, but for the last 13 years, she's been at Oak Crest. And then we have Ann Simmons, and Ann is an area manager for us. Prior to that, Ann spent 21 years at Evergreen. And then Saddlewood, she was there for eight years. And this fall, Ann was promoted to area manager, and she helps our administrative team in our office to make sure and ensure those quality programs in the afternoon. So terrific. So thank you for recognizing us tonight, and thank you for claiming the week for after-school professionals.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the National Day of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust on April 28, 2019?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Director, please come forward with the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Nice to see you all yet one more time. I'm going to ask Rabbi Zayev Harari to join me at the podium, and I will apologize if I did not come close to that. I practiced, but come over here. I'd like to read this proclamation and then present it to you. I'm sure our Board may have some comments for you, okay? This proclamation reads, "Whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, Public Law 96-388 dated October 7, 1980, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council has designated these dates as Days of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust. Whereas the history of the Holocaust provides the opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments, and their efforts to overcome prejudice through education and reflection. Whereas we remember with sadness the over 18 million victims, of which at least 6 million were Jews, including 1 and 1/2 million children who were victims of Hitler's Final Solution. And we remember with admiration the resistors and rescuers, known and unknown, who risked and lost their lives to save others. We remember with respect the survivors who were sheltered, who escaped, or who were freed, and who lived to contribute so much to our community and to our world. And whereas we have an obligation to ensure the memory and legacy of lives lost or forever changed in this horrific event are never forgotten and rededicate ourselves to the principles of freedom and a just society. Therefore, be it resolved that we hereby declare this date as Yom Hashoah Remembrance Day in our community and acknowledge Sunday, April 28, 2019, in remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust. Further, be it resolved that we pledge today to firmly commit ourselves to say 'never again,' and those two words are in all caps, and to work to promote human dignity by confronting intolerance and hate whenever and wherever it occurs." And I know each of you have signed this proudly. And Rabbi, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the Board and our Superintendent and our entire school district. You're welcome to share any words if you'd like, or Board, you may have comments.
First of all, I would like to thank you for this proclamation. It is an honor for me to accept this, especially since I myself am a, I'm not a survivor, but I am a member of a family that you, that lost 36 of its members. On my father's side and my mother's side, they had large families, and we lost almost all of them. There's one family, one family member who is still alive. She's 82 years old now. She was saved in Auschwitz and smuggled to a, to the church. There's a Catholic church right outside the death camp, and that's what saved her life. And she is now 82, as I told you. She lives in Israel, has three children of her own, and by now, I think they have, these children have children of their own, 11 children, and four great-grandchildren. And she said to me, "This is God's revenge of Hitler." I really thank you very much for this honor, and I'll take it to Temple Beth Shalom.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to thank, our mayor has been very, very involved. Mayor Gwen, he's been so involved in, in the Holocaust programs and remembrance. And I remember the first program I went to, I just cried all the way through it.
Thank you.
It is very important these days, when we see so much hate, to say, just as your proclamation says, "Never again." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now ask the School Board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the hall, table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the School Board Secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy only, a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to, or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Dante Prophet.
Good evening, School Board, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Dr. Mayor, and the rest of the School Board. Nice to see you here. Dante Prophet, P-R-O-P-H-E-T, 5001 Southwest 20th Street, Apartment 3807, Ocala, Florida, 34474. And as you know, I am the president of the Professional Association for our Education Support Professionals, and I'm here to talk to you, of course, about them and also about a rally we're having that is sponsored by MEA also, which is the Professional Association for our instructional personnel, and even IUPAC, which is our Professional Association for our custodial workers, our lunch workers, and all the great people that's out there. So we have a rally that we're calling Red for Ed. I understand I can't give it to you, but I can show you here. Red for Ed, and it's going to be Wednesday, April 17, 4 to 6, at the corner of Southeast 25th and 4th King Avenue. And right here, what we're doing, we're just asking our community to back public education in our community of schools. As a union, I think people forget that we are really here to make sure that... As a union, I think people forget that we are really here to make sure that public education, our community schools, our neighborhood schools are the best schools in this county, and that is our goal. Many of my people that I represent live in their community, so their school is very important to them. And we're asking that our state increase the funding for, for we can make sure that our students have the best educators, have the best pair of professionals, have, have the best teachers, have the best counselors, have the greatest food in, in our cafeteria. And, and, and we're also want our community to come out on this event to show their support and solidarity with our students and with our educators around the state. We have seen on the news how Red for Ed things are kind of taking over our country because communities and parents and teachers and professionals are saying, "You know what? It's about time that we support our community." And one message that I would love to give y'all is, first of all, thank you for going to Tallahassee and advocating for Marion County Public Schools, which I still believe is the best way to get kids, to get kids financially stable, to support families. When we support our schools, we're supporting our families because you're the larger employers of people in Marion County. So that matters. And one thing I want to shine a spotlight, spotlight on is our information processing clerks, our, our IPCs. These are people that register our kids when they come in. A lot of times, they may be the first person that a family see. And, and they work hard, especially during F T E week, to make sure that our school district is getting the right money. During these time periods, they work overtime. And, and I just want to make sure that we understand that these are dedicated workers who work in our district. I remember at the beginning of the school year, I got an IPC who called me crying, talking about how, and this was a brand-new IPC, talking about how the workload was overbearing. But she, but she was doing it because she cared about our students. And one thing that I know we want to personally fight for, for M E S P, is that we want to make sure that our education support professionals are, are well-trained and can be able to do their job properly. And training is where it's at. And we ask that everyone work with us, reach out to us. We have people that are nationally certified to be able to, to do training related to CPR, first aid, related to managing behaviors. And, and one thing we have talked about is the need, making sure that we have good mental health. And we know that our district is doing a, a great job in that. And also, one thing that I have reached out to the district about is having, if we can have a school resource officer at every school, if we can have all these great things at every school, one thing we do need at every school is to have nurses at every school. We have healthcare assistants, and let me tell you, they are hard-working. When I have reached out to that staff, they're saying that they want to have some more training. And that's something that I know the district and I is going to start talking about, to make sure that every school has some type of medical, qualified medical official there. Because we want the community to know that when you walk on a Marion County public school there, that your kid is safe in every incident. So once again, M E S P, M E A, I U P A C, we come to ask the school board, our community, our parents, our students to come on out to a rally on April 17th to support public education and make sure every Wednesday, if you are a supporter of our neighborhood schools, if you are a supporter for, of daughter NH Jones, Evergreen, Oak Crest, Ward-Hollins, I can name them all, if you are a supporter, that on Wednesdays, you wear red to show solidarity. And April 17th, come out and support. Once again, thank you Superintendent Dr. Mayor, Chairwoman King, and school board members. You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more, and then-
Okay.
Roberta Sukanek? Sukanek, thank you.
Roberta Sukanek, S is in Sam, U K A N E K, at 6305 Yucatan Drive, Orlando, Florida, Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Mayor, and Mr. Gibbs. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you. Reverend Cummings, you were correct in the work session on April 2nd, that thirty days is enough time to get things done, not sixty days, not ninety days, and definitely not four years. At that work session, there was some misinformation and unconfirmed information, which I would like to address this evening. Outside council stated they would very much like to negotiate with Gracie. Yet negotiations are not a take-it-or-leave-it situation. It is parties sitting down to work out issues, share information, get on the same page, and come to some common grounds. During my time working with the school board, I have only been given one opportunity to meet with the board designee and school board counsel, which was November 8th, 2017. Though I have requested a second meeting with each communication I have had with the school board and outside counsel. It was also stated that Gracie's towers were not damaged by the removal of equipment. We have asked for industry-standard documentation from the contractor, and we have asked for your assistance in also obtaining those. Gracie is not holding up any site tower replacement with a tenant on a school board property. The building of Vanguard High Tower cannot be placed on hold while we are waiting for information we have requested several times now. Gracie has sent an amendment to its forty-two site leases, active and in good standing, having, having never had a single default. I hope each of you have had a chance to review these terms. I am asking again for another meeting to have an open, transparent discussion and negotiate terms for the amendment. Our board has decided to move forward with the Vanguard High School site lease on the leased location. Under our exclusive site lease at Vanguard High, replacing a tower on our leased premises, which is depicted in the survey we submitted to the school board and our site lease and M O L. Gracie has no defaults to the Marion County Public Schools. We cannot let this opportunity to bring 4G LTE 911 First Responders Network to the rural areas of Marion County. FirstNet 911 will expand emergency response to rural areas and bring 4G speed to these same areas, areas in which your schools are located. This is a federal government initiative. Once again, I am requesting a meeting with the board designee and both our councils to move forward quickly and timely. The amendment on the next board meeting's agenda would be quickly and timely. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve consent agenda item C9.1-C20.1 as submitted? Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve change order number 01 Amendment Work Authorization Number Two Deductive Change Order to construct a security fencing system at Hillcrest School as part of the District-wide Security Fencing Project Number 18-106 in the amount of $92,033.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. Do we have any discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the donation of a vehicle to the North Marion High School automotive program? Mr. Gibbs, you asked that this item be placed under discussion.
Yes, there was initially some confusion on this when I came to my office over the amount of it. So I just wanted to clarify, the amount originally came to us as 500, and we didn't know if it was one car or multiple cars, but it is one car and its value is over $3,000. So I just wanted it placed on there. They did submit terms with theirs, and I did not approve them because they were not open to, I did not approve the contract or the donation contract because they weren't open to amending it to include public records provisions, which were required to have under statute. So I don't approve any contract that comes through with that, but you are free to consider it and approve the donation as you see fit.
Okay. Actually, I should have got the motion. Do I have a motion?
So I move.
Ms. McCall, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Okay, discussion?
I mean, it's a donated car for their automotive program. I, I really don't see a problem at all.
Yeah, there's not, I don't see that either. Okay. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the negotiations with the selection committee recommendations of Oak Crest Elementary External Operator? Any other motion? Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion?
This is, this is for what now?
This is for the external operator.
For Oak Crest.
This is the one I had questions with?
Yes.
Yeah, I have questions.
You have questions?
And I thought she was going to be here tonight.
She is here.
She is. Okay.
Would you like to come on up?
Do you want her?
Ms. Elsperman. Board, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Jane Elsperman.
Good evening.
Hey, Ms. Elsperman. I, I was looking at the proposal that you gave, and that Oak Crest, that the committee looked at. I, I have some questions about this. And one of the questions I have is, exactly how many people are with your company in with this?
Well, the, the contract includes services that I will be providing through the, through the company. The services will include having, having other people come in and serve as, do some coaching, as well as also having the availability to do some data mining with them and also some curriculum development. So we'll be looking at how we can infuse best practices. And I'll be bringing in experts that I work with in other venues and that I have come to know in the consulting work that I've been doing for the last two years.
So with this, how many people are going to be on, I mean, how many people are going to be on-site at this, at Oak Crest? That's, that's my question.
Sure.
I mean, the other things, other ones I read, they told us how many people were coming because this is, this is a huge amount of money.
Right. And, and I understand that, but there, the services, I'll be bringing in people that will be here for periods of time to, to provide a service. And then I will serve as the, the site coordinator for the, for the project. But I'll be contracting with other people and bringing them in to provide the services so that we can do a, a full-service program. I'm only one person, and so I would be leveraging the opportunity to bring in other experts that would be able to support the work that's going on at Oak Crest.
So what, what type of day-to-day, that's, what, what type of day-to-day services is Oak Crest going to get, you know, with you being this external operator?
Well, they would be getting the support of the-
I mean, because you just said you, you're just one person.
I am just one person. But I'll be doing the executive coaching. I'll be also coordinating the, the work that will be done by other consultants that I'll be bringing in and allow, and really allow them to grow as, as a school together so that the, the goal would be at the beginning of the year to have a, a very strong, hands-on approach that would be, would be day-to-day operation. And then really begin doing a gradual release. I know my teacher friends understand what that is. So that we can then allow the, the school to be able to see how they can, how they operate with, without very intensive support. So looking at a project that would have a high infusion at the beginning of the year that will allow the school to be able to really look at some of the models that they're using and be able to adapt and make some changes. When, when I work with a school, whether it's a, whether it's here in Florida or someplace else, the most important thing to do is to analyze the resources that you have there on that campus. Human resources, the facility, the materials that they have in order to, to move student achievement forward. And then begin to really ensure that everyone is using the, the, the programs and products with fidelity and help them to learn how to monitor the, how they're using that and turn the ownership of the learning over to the students. So it'd be looking at a real comprehensive program that would allow the ownership of learning to be really given to the students and empower the teachers to be able to do that. So I'll be, I'll be at the very beginning, very, very much hands-on in support of the leadership team, leadership development, leadership coaching, and working with the, the teachers in, in how, how they're doing collaborative planning and what they're do, how, how that is working in terms of the data that they're using to ensure that students are, in fact, making progress so that at the end of the year, we'll have a student academic achievement of C or higher. That's the goal.
Mr. Cummings, in checking around on some of the external operators, most of them have a site coordinator that is designated at the school and even the one we have now. And then they bring in those specialties as they, as they get to, to that point.
So you're mostly going to be doing the coaching for the teachers. I mean, what kind of hands-on activities are going to be with the kids? That's, because I'm, when I'm reading, when I read the plan, I just saw mostly stuff geared towards coaching the, the teachers and the staff. I didn't see anything specific to the kids.
Well-
Directly specific to the-
Well, to me, the most important work that we do is we put a, we have a good, strong leader that has a very strong focus and can, and is able to really deliver the, the support and leadership that's needed at the school. And then, then making sure that all the adults in the building are given the tools that they need, both the, the physical tools that they need and the support that they need to use those tools in a way that will enhance and improve student achievement. So most of the work that, that I would be doing would be with the instructional staff and the administrative staff in, and letting them turn the learning over to the students. So really, coaching up the, the administrative staff, the leadership team, and then working with the, the coaches and other support personnel that they have at that school that work with the teachers, working with the teachers in their collaborative planning, as well as ensuring that we're putting systems in place that will allow for fidelity of, fidelity of operation of the programs and making sure that the, that the students are getting the best that they can from every teacher that's on that campus.
Are you, are you already over at Oak Crest, doing some work with them?
I have done some work with them in the past, yes, sir.
So what's going to be different than what you're already doing now?
Well, there's a whole, there's a, there's a different level of accountability with being an external operator. With an external operator, I, I would be responsible for the results of that school. When you're a consultant, you, you provide recommendations and suggestions, and that, and, and that's weighed within the, the work that the individuals are doing. But when you're an external operator, you really are taking on the responsibility of ensuring that, that everyone at that school is on point and that you're providing them the support and the resources to ensure that they're able to do that.
Your plan also says that you're currently doing some other work with some other schools as well in the district? Is that going to continue if you become the external operator?
Well, that was, that particular work was for this particular year. And that is, that's all that that plan was for.
I'm still, I'm still not getting it. I'm not feeling, I'm, I'm not getting, I mean, I understand you're going to bring in people to help with you doing this, but I'm, I was seeing, I read some other plans where they said, "We're going to have this many people on campus for this many days, and they're going to do A, B, C, D." I'm not, I just don't see that. I don't see this, if I'm not seeing it right, y'all tell me. But I don't see that specifically in, did y'all see it?
I think this is a new territory. I think that, and we don't really have any success stories yet because it's brand-new. We don't have our first grades. And I think that everything everyone's doing, it's all a first time. And everyone has their own style. Some of the, some of the external operators had a certain style of a couple of very specific pers, very specific people that they were going to place there. And what I'm reading as I read the plans, I read Mrs. Elsperman's plan is to reach out to experts that she knows, not really a very specific same one over and over. The other plans, am I saying it right, Ms. Elsperman? The other groups, I mean, am I saying what you're doing? Because I feel like the other plans will bring kind of the same people in, it'll be a consistent thing. Where Ms. Elsperman wants to bring in a variety of different, as she needs them. What she sees she needs, and she makes the call, and she brings that in. I think- I think it's going to be more as we go. We do what we need to do.
And at, and to, just to clarify, at the beginning, there will be more intense opportunities for, for other people to learn from a variety of, of people. Because at the beginning, it's about creating that really solid launch to get the school year up and running. And then after that, it would be the monitoring that goes in to ensure that the, that the, the data systems are in pay, place, that all of the curriculum is being delivered with fidelity. And that monitoring would take, would, would be, a lot of it would be done by me. But then there are other people that, this is their level of, their, their area of expertise. People that work specifically with, with coaching coaches, people that work specifically with, with different subject areas. So, I would be bringing them in. But they do not work with my company. I would be contracting with them, much like you are contracting with me. So, I would issue a contract for them to come in for a, for a particular period of time. And if that's something that, if you would like more specific information, I could certainly provide you with more specific information about the, the different contracted services and, and the things that I'm recommending would be initiated at the beginning of the year.
I am incredibly comfortable with Mrs. Elsperman. She has a proven track record. She kept Westport High School A for many years. She's worked with people all over the country that she has their knowledge and may bring some of them in that have worked with turnaround schools. She has ownership in Marion County. And so, she wants this to be as, as successful as we do. So, I am very comfortable, especially since the external operator is so new. I am very comfortable in if we need that external operator at Oak Crest, awarding it to Mrs. Elsperman.
Mr. Cummings, would you feel more comfortable if it was a little, spelled out a little bit more as Ms. Elsperman?
I'm not comfortable. I, I'm, I don't know Ms. Elsperman. I heard of her reputation, and it's all been good. But me personally, I'm just not seeing detail, more detailed things that I would hope to have seen. Because, because this external operation, operator thing is so new to us. And it's because it is a lot of money that we're spending out on a yearly basis. Already with one school, we may possibly, God forbid, we don't have to, go into it with Oak Crest. I just want to make sure that we're, we're getting what we're supposed to get. Not doubting that you would do it, but just making sure that we're getting what we're supposed to have and that it's going to be the best thing for our kids and that we know upfront exactly. Whereas no cloudy judgment, nobody's curious about what we're going to get down the road. I, I just, I'm one of those people that need to see it in, in black and white.
I think one of the most important things that helps me be comfortable with this decision is that Ms. Elsperman is going in with her eyes wide open. You're under no illusions as to the needs of, of Oak Crest. It's not a surprise to you three or four months in at just how deep the needs go and how pervasive the underperformance has been for so many years. And I like the idea that you are not married to your own employees, so to speak, that you are going to bring in whoever has the expertise from Idaho, Alachua County, because you have a network. You have built a professional network over the years so you can leverage the need and match the people that are being hired to the needs of Oak Crest specifically. And it's also really important to be able to create the well-oiled machine and then fade out. Because in the end, we don't want to have to pay you for a long, long, long period of time. You know, we're looking for that leader that can jumpstart the stall that, that we're currently experiencing with Oak Crest. They're on the cusp of greatness. They're, they're right there. And I know this by my interactions with the school. So, we need someone that can come in and get them over the top and teach them how to keep themselves there.
And I hear that.
So, that's, that's where I'm coming from. We have to pick somebody.
We have to vote tonight.
And we have to vote tonight. And I think we also really need to be mindful of the process that, that the external operator committee went through and, and the makeup of that committee and, and how often we met and how deeply we dug to, to find external operator candidates, to interview six of them, and to have one operator come out 165 points ahead between first and second category ranking with third and fourth only within 30 to 40 points of each other, I think speaks clearly about the mission that Jane Elsperman has for Oak Crest Elementary. Madam Chair, I call for the question.
Before we move forward, I, I need the answer. Mr. Cummings has asked for more details. Can you provide that, like what he specifically asked for moving forward?
And I would be more than happy to sit down and, and, and work that out for you, sir, if that would make you feel more comfortable. I, I understand. And I like, I, I think everybody here, what we really want is for the work that Oak Crest has done so far to be vindicated in the grade that they're going to get this year. And, and hopefully, you would not need my services or the services of any other external operator. But my, my sole mission would be to ensure that we could get Oak Crest in a place where an external operator would be a one-and-done, that you only do this one time because the systems have been put in place that will allow the, the school to be successful without outside support.
Can I say one more thing? Can I say one more thing? I understand Mr. Cummings' concern that he's new on the board, remember that day when I was? And he sees what he sees and he compares. Some of us can speak from a different level of experience and with you personally. And I will say, Mr. Cummings, Mrs. Elsperman was my children's principal in Osceola. Well-oiled machine over there at the time she was there. And there was a time it wasn't well-oiled. And I personally, Ms. Elsperman, she will, you go in and you give her facts and you give her a situation from your point of view. And what's different about her probably than a lot of people is she can change her opinion. She can change her decision. She, she and I, you know, she's, she can change her mind. She doesn't say, this is the way it is going to be done, and this is the way it's, only can be done. I can see her going along and changing and moving as the, as she needs to adjust. I can see her, she's the, making the adjustments type person. I've, I've, she's done that with me as a parent, and she's done that in her schools that she ran. She makes adjustments when she needs to make an adjustment. She doesn't stick to it just because that's the way she said it should be done. She can say, I was wrong on that attempt, and let's go a different way. And I feel like it's going to be interesting, and I feel like Mr. Cummings will really enjoy working with you because he'll be able to sit with you, and you will explain things very clearly, as you've explained to me many times over the years in my own schools with my children, why things are the way they are. And I'm, I'm ready to call the question. And, and I, I appreciate Mr. Cummings coming forward with questions because...
It's part of the due diligence.
Because every, we're five people with five different thought processes. And, and I appreciate him wanting this deep information from you that I know you can provide him, but without your crystal ball, you did not know you needed that for us. And now you do know. And so, I'm ready to vote.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, like sign.
Aye.
And the motion passed 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $13,388. $1,888 to Bellevue Elementary School from Bellevue Lions Club. $1,000 to Forest High School from Heart of Florida Health Center, Inc. $2,500 to Marion County Student Media Festival from Cox Communication. $1,500 to Vanguard High School from their business partner, Rainies, Inc. via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,500 to Vanguard High School from Vinod and Anirunda Miryalah. $5,000 to Westport High School from Live Oak Stud. May I have a motion in a second? Moved by Mr. Cummings. Second by Ms. Thrower. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 4-0. And Ms., did you get that? Okay, good. All right, and Ms. Thrower, would you like to thank?
Sure. This is always one of the best parts of the meeting, to thank the community for being so incredibly generous month after month, week after week, when we come to these school board meetings and acknowledge these donations from just all walks of our community. So, we can't thank you enough. We couldn't do what we do without you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for April 18th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss rezoning update, impact fee rate indexing calculation, long-range planning, selling of district property, MTI discussion, secondary academic data, annual review of health insurance, code of student conduct, district staffing plans, speech pathologist update, and ESE onsite monitoring report. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May 9th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss PAW, PAW, BARKBAS, school start, stop times, district staffing plan, and camp soar update. Okay, and Dr. Mayor, we'll begin with you.
Okay. I, I won't embarrass you, Officer Wissinger, but we do have to thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. It's good to see you. You haven't been with us in forever. It's the best duty there is.
Yes, it is.
Yes. So, it's good to see you, though. And you are our SRO at Fort King Middle. And so, we, we keep you in our hearts, especially you and, and all of your colleagues, of course. And thank you for everything you do for our kids. I know that they know you by name and that you have such a good relationship with those kids there. So, thank you for that. We appreciate you very much. And come back soon, okay? Okay, okay. I wanted to circle back on when the Rabbi was here to remind you all that April 28th is going to be our ceremony for Days of Remembrance. We have that on your calendar. But I want to remind you all and, and remind the community too that the event will be at 5:00 p.m. in the MTI auditorium. We'll again have display of student work prior to a, a short but meaningful ceremony that evening. And the Rabbi will be with us and the mayor too. He, he's accepted, and he'll be with us that night. And then don't forget, the Saturday's the Literacy Festival from 9:00 to 1:00 downtown. And Mari, who is a middle school student at Howard Middle, came up with the theme "Traveling Through Time." And we're thrilled that, that we had a student choose the theme this year. And so, all of the different booths, over 50 of them, will be based on a book that deals with, with time. Either time travel, like A Wrinkle in Time, or something historical like Strawberry Girl or Little House on the Prairie, or a futuristic book like a Ree Bradbury. So, it'll be a good time from 9:00 to 1:00. It's all free. It's all free for families. So, we appreciate your support with that. So, for tonight, that, that'll be all. I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, we have an expulsion hearing I'm trying to get dates for. So, if you could advise whether you're available July 9th or July 16th?
You want to, you need to narrate this moment?
As soon as possible.
I know I'm not the 9th. I don't even think I am the 16th. Let me double-check.
July 9th and the 16th?
One of those days, yeah, I just need...
That's so far away.
That's where we are on calendars. Between the attorneys and, I think the attorneys gave me like four or five dates, and then our staff gave me two dates out of those four or five. So, we're down to the two.
I think I'm okay with both.
And it's summer, so people are on vacation.
Four morning?
In the morning?
Black in the morning?
Yeah, it'll start at 9:00, and then usually we schedule it all day, just to be safe.
I'm good with either one.
Actually, I am okay on the 16th. I'm not the 9th because I'll be in Orlando with Kid Central.
And I'll reach out to Ms. McCall tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Stacy?
I think...
Ms. Thrower?
Just wanted to again thank the Oak Crest External Operator Search Committee for the hard work that they put in. None of us are comfortable having an external operator. I'm looking forward to one heck of a community celebration when Oak Crest earns that C or higher. I'm, I'm holding on to that prayer for now, and we will go with that. And also, just as importantly, wanted to wish Dr. Mayor a very happy birthday.
Thanks.
Happy birthday to you.
Oh, it's pink!
Of course.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for tonight.
I, I just want to say a happy birthday to Dr. Mayor as well.
Thank you.
One thing we want everyone to know, that school safety is of the utmost importance to all of us on this board. We just left Tallahassee. And I think the number-one top priority that we all mentioned when we went around was school safety. We, we want the parents to know, we want the community to know, that it's always going to be a top priority. And then making sure that our kids get the right education. So, I pray too that Oak Crest gets to see grade as well. And we, we're praying that if, if need be, Ms. Elsperman has to do it, that she'll do a good job with it, so.
Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students from March 12th through March 12th, 2019. Mrs. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child disciplinary matter?
We have four off-air.
Four off-air. Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 19-121, JD 19-122, JD 19-126, JD 19-127, JD 19-128, JD 19-129, and JD 19-130 with educational services for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year and all of the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thrower. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion, Ms. Stacy, were you an aye?
I'm an aye.
Okay, I just want to make sure before I, the motion passed 4-0.
Tomorrow.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 19-125 without educational services through the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year and all of the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 4-0. I will be calling a brief recess to clear the room prior to discussing a student discipline matter. Parents will then have an opportunity to address the board. This is not a due process hearing. It is only an opportunity for parents to express their concerns. Prior to the board considering the superintendent's recommendation for the expulsion, parents have had the opportunity to discuss options available for them. If the student is expelled, the student, the school board staff remains available to talk with parents about the alternative educational programs available for that expelled student. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting at, oh, and I can't even read the...
6:58.
6:58, 6:58.